Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and any of the viewing public that may be joining us as well. I'm gonna call this school committee meeting to order. And I'll ask Mr. Horgan to lead us in a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the
Thank you. School Committee reports. School Committee Chair, I have nothing to report at this time, other than to say, I'm glad, I'm glad to see everyone, and everyone seems to be doing okay. And thank you for your efforts during this very difficult time. Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Resource Committee, we met this past week, and Ava Kelly gave us an update on enrollment. Fifty-five ninety-four. We talked about the need to move some teachers because of the enrollment moving up the grade at bulk. We're going to have our largest ninth grade class in many years, three hundred and seventy students. The senior class is only two hundred and forty. No plans for nine C cuts this year. Budget for next year is not yet settled. We don't know from the state just where that's gonna be at, Bob will, or Craig will talk a little bit about that later. We don't know what we will receive from the COVID nineteen aid debt. Enrollment figures have been accepted for the MSBA for Crocker School. And we were given an update on remote learning, which we will hear more about tonight.
Thank you, Mr. School Building Needs, move right into that.
School Building Needs, we were given an update on and school buildings in general, and Crocker Field on the MBSA project, projects which are going to be taking place, eighty percent reimbursement. We were approved for three point one million of the projects, and it came in eight hundred and twenty-five thousand under the bids. We were given a list of all the projects going on in the schools, and we were given an update on the security system.
Thank you, much appreciated. On the state level, we appreciate the, we will certainly put that, put that money to good use. Policy sub, any comments, any questions? I'm sorry, I didn't ask. Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Horgan.
So we have a meeting scheduled this Thursday at twelve with a robust schedule, so hopefully our next general meeting on the fourth, I'll have a report for you.
Great. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, moving to Student Support Subcommittee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
We met on Tuesday, April fourteenth, and got an update about the school closure plans, how the plans are communicated to students, how they're put together. We got updates about level of engagement, and the level of engagement at schools runs from, and there may be different numbers at this point, but fifty percent to ninety percent, and the greatest engagement is in the elementary grades. Schools are using a lot of different curriculum pieces, iReady is something that they're using a lot. And then we got an update about, you know, special education students and English learner, learner students. Particularly, I guess, I don't know, the superintendent will talk a little bit about that, but there, there are not a lot of families that they haven't gotten any kind of notice from or outreach from, so that's, that's good, but there are some, and there have been visits, I guess, by student resource officers to those, and they've put out three thousand additional Chromebooks into the district, so that's amazing. That's it.
You're back. I lost you for a while there.
Oh, so sorry. We, they put, the district has put three thousand additional Chromebooks out into hands of kids, so that's great.
That's terrific. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Personnel Subcommittee, I have nothing to report at this time, other than to say, thank you for those teachers that are
I think we lost the mayor.
The mayor, can you repeat what you said? You froze.
We have a new student report. I'm not sure if it's Ms. Tome or Ms. Scarpalletti, it was pre-recorded, I believe.
Standby, please.
Hi, everybody, this is Kayden. I will be reporting the student perspective for Week Three of Online Learning, as well as Week Who Even Knows Anymore on Quarantine. The FHS Class of 2020 Instagram has been recently active, showcasing posts from many of the graduating students with their college plans. It's inspiring in these unclear times because it provides a clear direction for so many. Senior class officers and other student leaders will be meeting on Monday to review options, provide input, and discuss future steps for honoring the graduating class. Information about the General Excellence Application, class speaker, master ceremonies information, and several scholarships will be released soon. Pittsburgh High School has been recognized as one of the best high schools in the United States by earning a spot on the U.S. News and World Report List. Remote learning continues throughout this week. My work generally consists of a forty-five minute video that we have to take notes on every day, as well as an additional set of questions that we have to submit by the end of the week. We continue presenting through Google Hangouts and Zoom, where each of my classes meets at least one time every week. It's definitely hard to keep track of the work and find the motivation to actually get up out of bed, but I've been writing down all my assignments on Monday, so I just finished that in my journal. So I have them all in one place, and I know exactly what I'm doing. The teachers are really easy to get in touch with at a time like this, so that's also really helpful, as well as guidance when students in grades nine, ten, and eleven are currently reviewing recommended courses for their core academics and choosing electives to pursue in the arts, music, business, fitness, health, and technology. The College Board has additionally altered the way that AP exams will be given this year. Students enrolled in an AP class are expected to take the AP test. The AP exam this year will be forty-five minute exams that will mainly consist of two free response questions. I'm taking four AP exams, so once I take the exams in May from my house, I'll be able to report about those better. I hope everyone is safe and healthy, and I can't wait to see you all again. Bye.
Nicely, terrific. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Copeland, that was great. No one, no one wishing to speak. Okay, approval of the minutes from school, previous school committee meeting of April sixth, twenty
Motion we approve.
Motion made to approve, all in favor?
Hi. Second.
Should we, we take individual votes on this, folks? How do you want to do this? Or is it? Are we okay with the way we just did that?
I am.
Okay, all in favor, I, all right, good. Thank you. I don't, I don't believe there's a is a need for an executive session. Anyone wishing to make a communication? Please indicate at this time.
I do.
All right.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say a good word about all of our cafeteria workers. I've been picking up lunches for a couple of families, including my own, and the school lunch is a way that kids have been able to really have continuity with their school. They are familiar with the school lunch that comes home. My kids are most excited about the breakfast muffins when those occur. And it's been a really, you know, it's been great to see the cafeteria workers and the incredible hard work with the thousands of meals that are, you know, being taken care of. So if any parent doesn't know, please know that between eleven-thirty and one, you can go to most of our schools, I think all of our schools, and then there are designated spots as well. But congratulations, Sedexo Nutrition Services is absolutely hitting it out of the park, is really, really great, and I wanted to just do a shout out. I saw Dave Semenza today and said I would speak on their behalf.
Thank you, Ms. Craig, and that was, that was good of you to do that. That's right, we, we have a, a great deal to be grateful for with everyone, everyone working together in the city of Pittsburgh, but particularly Sedexo and, and the folks that are working with them. Thank them, thank, thank them all. Any other comments, communications? All right, now we move into the public comment period. Has anyone submitted a public comment? I don't know, but would it be to you, Bob, Superintendent?
I have no record of any public comments being received.
All right. Seeing none, then moving to the superintendents' report. Bob?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have Amy Jolly, Headmaster of Applewild School. Tonight, Amy will be talking about a proposed school called Aristotle Academy at Applewild, and she has a brief presentation prepared for the school committee. The school committee is required to vote on the school. It's one of the key steps moving forward with the state. Amy has met previously with myself or Randamanch and Alicia Baroski to go over specific programming at the school. We're satisfied with the programming that Applewild is proposing, and with that, I'll turn over the floor to Amy. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me, Mr. Mayor, School Committee. Gosh, twice in one year to be in front of you all. It's probably a record for Applewild. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Out of respect for your time, I'm gonna present briefly on the key topic areas that Bob was so kind to provide me as, as what you'd like to see for us going forward. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Great, okay. For anyone that may not be familiar with our school, we're an independent coeducational school for students in preschool through grade nine on Twenty-Six Acres in Pittsburgh. We've been around since nineteen fifty-seven, educating really a range of students, including those with language-based learning disabilities. At present, approximately twenty percent of our students are currently diagnosed with a range of learning differences, including those listed. We are fully accredited through the National Association of Independent Schools and the Association, and the Association of Independent Schools of New England. For this evening's purpose, we're in the process of obtaining approval from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to create a new, what they call seven sixty-six school, or a Massachusetts-approved special education day school, and actually, we want a camp as well for students with language-based learning disabilities. We've been talking about this for about a year, so I'm really excited to, to get the ball rolling this evening. We're here to comply with one of the very first step of Desi's rigorous and thoughtful approval, approval process. As we understand it, the goal today is to share information about our plans, including demonstrating that we meet basic safety regulatory and other standards. So the process, just to kind of outline it for, for everyone on the call, is our first step is we complete what they call Form Three, which we've done and was accepted by Desi. We then need to get three letters of support from area superintendents, which is well underway. And then we need Pittsburgh School Committee approval. And then, once those three steps are approved, we can actually apply, and there's a hundred and three-page form from Desi, it's really big, and it has everything that's on, that we cover this evening, and lots, lots more. So they actually do all of the, all the formal review of, of what we're looking to do. We're hoping to get that application in by the end of May and hoping to be certified or approved by sometime this summer. So you may be wondering what Aggrastol means, and the definition is growing wild in cultivated fields. And this is the, the outcome, we hope, for, you know, for our students. We like the wild connotation, when the Crocker family gave us the estate that our school is named after, Applewild. We like sort of the, the connection there with wild. So how are we gonna do this? So we're gonna sponsor the creation of a new school called Aggrastol Academy as a separate five oh one C nonprofit, with its home board and everything. Aggrastol will, will contract with Applewild for services such as dining hall nursing, special subject instruction, and other opportunities where we can share resources. We will, we think this is a way that will allow us to get this seven sixty-six school up and running quickly, and also, frankly, very cost-effectively. We're going to follow a prescriptive and individualized education philosophy for each student. Students will be referred to us by special education directors from a broad swath of Massachusetts. There's a need for the program because there's no similar program within a two-hour drive of central Massachusetts. Once the program is approved by Desi, it can be listed on Desi's website and on the Massachusetts of Approved, Massachusetts Association of Approved Seven Sixty-Six Schools. I just want to note right here, by approving our program, that does not, that does not require Pittsburgh to send us students. In fact, that's not our expectation. It's, so it's, this is part of just the process that, that Desi has because we are located in Pittsburgh. So the, this is where we'll go into the, the items that Bob kindly referred to us, and more details are available in the narrative that I sent all of you, but for the purposes of this evening and for expediency, I'll keep it pretty brief. So the first requirement is to document the population to be served and admissions. Basically, it's students with language-based learning disabilities who are not making effective progress with differentiated instruction in their current public school. We expect to ultimately enroll eighteen to twenty-four students in grades two through eight. As I mentioned before, special, special education directors will refer families to us who may be appropriate. They'll complete an application, they'll submit some teacher and our school evaluation forms, transcripts, educational testing, and IEPs. Of course, admissions will be rolling, and we, we actually expect approximately fifty percent of our enrollment to be private pay, so at the end of the day, I expect only maybe nine to twelve kids from, to be from public schools. Under physical plant, I provided you with a sixty-five-page document with all of our, all of our inspections. This is where we have a little bit of a leg up on other institutions that are maybe looking to start a school. We already comply with all the standards for school inspection. We do all, all the things like fire drills and all of that to keep kids safe. I know you all agree that the very first and most sacred responsibility we have to families is to student safety, so that's something our school takes really seriously. We also employ a Buildings and Grounds Team who take care of maintenance, and we also hire a custodial service who does a bang-up job doing cleaning and sanitation. For curriculum and education materials, Bob mentioned before that, that we met and went over our proposed curriculum. We kind of did a two-step thing. We provided access to our curriculum, and then Bob also provided access for us to Pittsburgh's curriculum, and we, we both sort of looked at it, and the standard we're looking to meet is, do we follow the Massachusetts State Curriculum Frameworks? And does it meet or exceed what's currently going on in the current district? And our first step in developing curriculum at Applewild is to start with the Massachusetts State Curriculum Frameworks. So in our cyclical curriculum reviews, that's where we start, we build from there. Because we're dealing with a specialized group of students, of course, we're going to be implementing other pedagogy and tools that are supportive of students with these disabilities. And one key element of our program for our curriculum is a daily one-on-one tutorial. And Aggrastol Academy, again, in terms of efficiency, will leverage the extensive educational materials that we already have with the school. So under school staff, the standard is provide thorough and efficient. For teacher qualifications, we will meet, what Desi tells us, is the appropriate qualification for our academic teachers. Our understanding is that for the population we're looking to work with, that's a master's degree with moderate special needs or the equivalent. In terms of student-teacher ratio, in the core academic subjects, it's going to be eight to one, and specials will be a little higher. I actually think the the, the true implementation will be closer to four to six to one, but we're gonna just go with the maximum and then be under it. For regular evaluation of staff, we already have a process of annual views, and then there's a side process of faculty supervision on a, on a really frequent basis. The school principal reviews criminal offender records, that's, that's yes. We would do the Corrie-Sory process, and that's something that back to that safety thing is super, super important. Standard six for administration. The standard is, do we have a clearly defined organization? And basically, we have a, I, I'm the head of school, and we will have folks under us that work for, directly for Aggrastol. But, you know, for example, the education director, the teachers, the, the director of, of the, of the program that we'll eventually hire. But we're gonna share resources with the CFO and the business office, percentage of my time, central office, the nurse, there are many things that will, on a proportional basis, will be shared, and that allows us to maximize efficiencies. So the specific titles and qualifications are all, all provided to Desi as part of that formal application, and frankly, we haven't hired all these people yet, so as we hire them, they'll get listed and included in that application. Under records, we do follow all of the state requirements for record maintenance and retention, so we do track daily attendance. We do track health, discipline, and progress reports. All of our records are kept in confidential and secure and fireproof locations in our, in our central office. When a student matriculates to another school, we have a process in place to send records to that school. We do also maintain a copy just in case. And then when a parent asks us for student records, we have a, a well-developed process where they sign a consent form, and then we basically send the records confidentially to the appropriate school personnel within forty-eight hours at, at no cost to the family. Standard eight is student services. School provides adequate pupil personnel for all students. We do have a school nurse that's on duty during the school day. We do plan on offering counseling, occupational therapy, speech and language, as well as other specialized services that our population may need as documented by their IEPs. For financial support, you know, our school's been around since nineteen fifty-seven. We own our property outright with no mortgage and no debt, and our endowment right now is about three million, and we have an annual operating budget of about five million. Our trustees have agreed to provide initial support to launch this endeavor. I did include in the package I sent to you copies of our nonprofit, our incorporation and our tax-exempt certification. And I also included a letter from our Board of Trustees that said, we are, as we go through the Desi approval process, we are also creating a new five oh one C, and, you know, everything that goes into that, it's just a lengthy process. For student learning time, we're gonna follow basically state standards. Our understanding at this time is it's a hundred and eighty-day minimum with a minimum of nine hundred instructional hours. I see no issue us being able to do that. The academy is going to follow a traditional school year. And the summer program, well, that will occur in the summer, and we haven't determined how many weeks that will be, but I imagine six to eight weeks. In terms of performance assessment, our students will take the MCAS and participate in any district-sponsored assessments that are deemed as important, and we'll, we'll comply with that. We routinely assess students for progress reports, intrums, as well as IEP progress reports and other performance reporting as a student makes, goes through our program. Onto the summer program, we do intend to offer an intensive academic skill development program for this population for grades two through seven. Campers will have the opportunity of a half-day or a full-day program with enrichments. Campers will again receive a one-on-one tutorial as part of the program, focusing on the areas you'd expect, you know, phonemic awareness, linguistic patterns, stuff that students with this, these disabilities struggle with. And then, you know, we're, we're treating that as, we had two options. We could offer it as a twelve-month program or eleven-month program, but we chose to do a ten-month academic program and a summer program, so we're actually looking for approval for both of those things, and we think that gives a district more flexibility. And I think that's it. I just want to say thank you for having me here. I understand with everything that's going on with this pandemic, you, you likely have many other things that you could be spending your time on, and I appreciate you welcoming me back. And I, our desired outcome for this, this meeting is to be approved to open this seven sixty-six school, as well as opening a camp. So are there questions?
Questions from the committee?
Just a, a comment, and I guess a question. So how do you know that? So within two, within two hours of North Central Massachusetts, there, there is not a similar opportunity. So where, where are students going currently? Where, where can students who have this, you know, high need, you know, find appropriate education?
Yeah, well, I think, I think a number of them are, are being schlepped to a long ways to get to school, so.
Yeah, okay. I have, I had a question, and here's my comment. I, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I have a personal stake in this in some ways because my mother taught pre-primary at Applewild for more than thirty-seven years, and she began in nineteen sixty-four. She always said, the, the year the Beatles arrived in America, she arrived at Applewild. From the start, the pre-primary was always open to children with, with real, real needs in terms of the verbal, as well as the social and emotional. So I do remember children who really struggled, who did really well in the kindergarten, and it was, it was a very open door for children with, you know, with, with greater-than-usual needs. And I guess this is one reason why I'm so at home at Pittsburgh Public Schools, because I, I feel like, you know, we, we have that spirit as well. So this, this is a really fine, this is a, this is a really fine thing for Pittsburgh, and I think that we, it will, again, shine another light on the great education that one can find in our city. So thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
I'm curious about the, you, you mentioned that you thought that there might be nine students from Pittsburgh Public Schools?
No, 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 nine, nine students from any public school.
Oh, from any public school, so I guess I'm just curious where you're getting the projection, and then I wondered, are you offering full scholarships for students in the school?
So to be in Massachusetts, so, so how this works is, a student is, in a public school, there's two paths to come to Aggrastol Academy. One is you can be a private-pay family. You can be a family that has a dyslexic child, and you make the, the personal decision to send your child to a private school, and you pay tuition. You might choose us, you might choose the Carroll School in Lincoln, you might choose Landmark up in Beverly, but then you write the checks. The second path is a special education director is working with a student and, and makes a realization, they have a student that is not making progress, even with, you know, differentiated instruction within the district. And then the district determines to do an out-of-district placement, and then contacts us, and we assess that child for possible admission. So the district, those districts who make that choice would be funding that child. But again, we don't advertise this program. Um but again, we don't advertise this program um to families like, you know, go after your school district. It's it doesn't work like that. It's they um they go to their special education director. And then the special education director approaches us.
I think uh I think you'll find that a number of students that would attend there. Our special education directors would first be looking at our kind of local uh school system. When I say local collaboratives, which I'm associated with the CAPS Collaborative out of Westminster. And Bob is associated with uh the FLAC Collaborative out of Lemester. Uh it's kind of where and there are. Our collaboratives cannot handle all of the needs of our special education students. There are ed students who just do not fit into our programs. So I think uh Amy uh this is gonna be welcomed by a number of systems. Because we're all looking for places that where students just don't fit in and this may, it'll be another one. So um I concur that uh it's a needed spot.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Amy, thank you again for your uh for your partnership and for um Applewild has got such a. Such a storied past and a and future as well. So we we appreciate. Uh the fact that they are part of the educational tapestry that's Pittsburgh, so. And you are a key component of that. And I I also wanna thank you and I know Sally has been involved. I've been up there on a couple of occasions, the community plays that have been put on up there and. You offering your facility for that purpose. So again, congratulations, a great program and uh good luck.
Mr. Man. While Amy's with us, could we take this out of order? And uh could I uh, could I ask Sally, would you, was Sally, because of your mom, would you make the recommendation?
Can you, can you include both school and camp just from a um?
Yes.
Yes. Um well, uh I'll make a mo- let's make a motion to take this out of order, so we need a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to take out of order. All in favor?
Motion that Pittsburgh School Committee hereby approve the um establishment of the Aggristall Academy. Both um school year and summer camp um for full approval.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Those, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your support.
You bet.
Congratulations.
Oh, cute dog there, Aiden. Okay, so I'll look for the minutes or something that shows the approval and I can use that for Desi.
Sure. So the minutes will be voted on by the school committee next Monday night at our next meeting. And I'll get your copy of of those minutes along with a lot of support from myself.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Good luck, Amy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, you wanna continue?
Okay, yeah. Uh Nate's going to queue up the presentation that we have uh. In regards to the our evolution of remote learning here in Pittsburgh. And um as you all know, we really jumped into the remote learning model back on March sixteenth. When the uh schools were closed uh initially by the governor. And um then we started a second phase of uh enrichment, which was uh voluntary. And that was uh changed. Uh we reached an agreement with our teachers, uh teaching staff uh that. The learning, the enrichment would be no longer be voluntary, but that it would count. And now uh this past Friday, Commissioner Riley, on the heels of Governor's um. Announcement to close schools through the end of the year or physically not reopen. Uh but to continue with remote learning, um has issued some uh guidance and some criteria. That Desi would like schools by grade level and subject to to address. You know, they use the term power standards. Uh we're in receipt of that. Those um that guidance that was released to school districts across the Commonwealth on Friday night. Uh we're unpacking it. We'll be uh talking about it some more this week with our principals, our coaches and our uh teachers. And we look forward to implementing those uh new standards for the remainder of the school year. So really, in in summary, uh Pittsburgh, like almost every school district across the country are. Where we truly are living and learning organizations. You know, we're we're getting better every day and uh how how are we doing that? We're trying to listen and learn from our s- uh stakeholders' experiences with remote learning. Um we've been providing more access uh and more devices, more Chromebooks to our community. Um over the uh last few weeks, um we have also been um having our teachers um. Improve their technology skills using the Google Classroom platform. And you know, we're eventually planning for reentry to school. While that may not happen this school year. Uh there will be some type of reentry next school year. Um and again, the last uh bullet here is the build-out of the remote, remote learning resources. The state has partnered with a variety of organizations, including WGBH and others. To provide resources for districts, whether you're urban, suburban, rural or vocational technical. Uh the library of resources both at that website and through our website through the e-learning app. So really, Pittsburgh, like the state, um we have some guiding principles as we move forward. Uh number one, we we agree with the uh Governor's decision that the physical closure of our our facilities. Is in the best interest and safety of our students, families and staff. Um as we go through this uh and continue this remote learning model. We're discovering like a lot of other communities across the country uh that we need to work harder and. And really uh work better to address the equity, access and opportunity. Uh so whether it be of technology devices, uh actually having Wi-Fi or providing different. Um modes of uh remote learning. Um we're working on that and continuing to make that better. Uh and and lastly, one of the most important issues um that we're working on and focusing on is. Maintaining connections between the staff, the students and the families. Um I know, I think at the last meeting, we talked about connections and uh engagement. So I think we've done a great job identifying connections. Uh we and a lot of other districts initially were. Concerned about the students who we weren't able to make connection with and now we're working on uh improving engagement across the district. So the the age-old question, or really the question over the last seven weeks is, what is remote learning? And really, remote learning uh without reading the slide is learning that takes place when the student and the teacher are not in the same physical space. Uh there are a few different modes that learning can take place. Uh one is it can take place by a video or audio conference call, uh can be enhanced by technology devices. Uh one-to-one video or phone calls, teachers checking in with students. Um initially, we provided work packets to our elementary and middle school students. Uh project-based learning is another mode, reading lists. And as I mentioned earlier, the various online platforms uh supported by the state or offered by the state. And through our own uh e-learning module can provide lessons for students to engage. One of our focuses this year, even before the um COVID crisis uh. Physically closed down our schools was how our English language learners um are receiving education. Um our commitment to to that group of students has not changed. Um at the elementary level, we continue to focus on the four domains of listening, reading, speaking and writing. Um we have made substantial progress over this year, uh working with our L students. Uh we will have the access results later this year. And again, at the secondary level, uh they have relied a little bit more on technology using the Google Classrooms. Uh for each standalone ESL class and again, focusing on the four domains of listening, reading, speaking and writing. Okay, at this point, I'll turn it over to John Thompson and he'll go over the next few slides.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. So I wanna begin uh tonight by talking a little bit about the special education. Uh services that teachers and our service providers are uh giving our students uh during the closure. So our special education teachers and related service providers are developing individual learning plans. That outline the type of remote services that will be provided to each student with an IEP. So what's teachers are doing is, in service providers, is they're actually going and looking at IEPs and trying to. Um decide what remote learning tools that they can use to meet students' needs. And they actually have to document that for every student on an IEP in an individual document. So it's a lot of work that these uh teachers and service providers are um involved in right now. In addition, special education services are being provided with um collaboration with the general education teacher. And um also, if the special education student um has um. Really severe services or additional services like OT or special uh or speech. Uh these services are also being provided uh remotely um that have been set up uh to address uh students' really intense needs. So just think about students receiving speech services. That's now happening online. In addition to students receiving OT services, that's now happening online. So these services um have um been changed to um in-person to virtual. So teachers um are doing a great job doing that. During this time, um we are also running uh remote and phone IEP meetings for annual reviews and three-year reevals. Uh when when there's testing available, so IEP meetings um are still happening during closure. In addition, uh teachers uh will continue to connect to families to support the needs and access to our students with disabilities. So our teachers and service providers are reaching out and connecting with families during this time. And also connecting one-on-one to make sure students' needs are are being met. And uh finally, our special education department has and will continue to provide students with alternative means of assessing and learning from home as needed. So there's some students um in our district that remote learning doesn't work for. Um those might be students in our pathways program or a guided learning program or other programs in our district. So on an individual basis, alternative uh methods are being made. Um some teachers are mailing home individual work to meet students' needs. Um so that is happening um in some capacity. Next slide. So this evening, I wanna talk a little bit about grading uh for elementary. Uh middle and high school for the third trimester or for our fourth quarter, technically the end of the year grades. So in at the elementary level, we use a standards base report card. Um and we use two scales. So on the first scale uh for English Language Arts and Mathematics, uh we will be giving students M. For meeting standards or uh P for progressing um for the last report card grading period. Or um depending on the content area, um students um will receive S for satisfactory. Or N needs improvement for the contact area for mathematical practices, science, social studies. Health, music, physical ed, media, art and habits of mind, which um is pretty much habits of mind is um our behavior and conduct. Um so during this time, an M for meet standards or an S for satisfactory. Will be given to students who participated in remote learning and attempted to do assignments on certain standards. And then P uh for progressing or N for needs improvement will be given to students. Who did not participate in remote learning and did not attempt um assignments related to specific standards during the closure. Um and then finally, any standards that were not addressed this year because of the closure will receive an NA. Uh next to it during the last marking term. That's for elementary. For middle school, they're on a traditional um marking A, B, C, D, um and F uh grading. So normal um letter grading. So students in grades five to eight will be assessed for the fi- final uh quarter or trimester. Depending on what school you go to. Um you'll be given a credit or a CR for um. Classes or a non-credit or NCR for their grade during the semester. So final grades for the year, the um average will be calculated using the quarters one, two and three. Or trimesters one and two. And just to review, um middle school um for our uh Longsjo. And Memorial, they're on quarters and McKay is on a trimester system. And then finally, the high school, I know a lot of people have been asking about what the high school's going to do for grades, especially with our juniors applying for colleges. And our seniors going to colleges um in um the fall. So the following grade weight scale uh will be determined for the final grades for the year. So quarter one will be thirty percent, quarter two will be thirty percent, mid-year exam will be ten percent. Quarter three will be thirty percent, quarter four will be zero percent. We will not be using any um. Uh percentage of grading for quarter four. Um I'll talk a little bit about uh that in a second, but we'll be looking at students uh. Positive increased effort based on engagement, um effort, engagement and participation. Which all that will total up to a hundred percent. So on the transcript, what will be reported this year, uh the transcript will continue to feature an end-of-the-year uh numeric grade. For quarters one, two and three and midterm exams, each category will provide uh will continue to feature a numeric grade. For this year, quarter four will appear as CR credit or NCR for or for non-credit. And then how does this impact uh the GPA of students? Students' GPA will not be negatively affected by quarter four other uh other than improve their overall semester or year-long course average. GPA will be calculated using quarters one, two and three in midterm participation um exams. Students, I'm sorry, quarters one, two and three in midterm exams. Students who have an average of sixty based on quarters one, two and three or the mid-year exam. And review of their effort, participation and engagement during quarter four will fail the course for the year. And may need to complete summer work on ingenuity or retake a course in the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. So again, as noted, quarter four can in have an impact on the overall grade, but only improve it. So again, quarters one, two, three and the mid-year will be uh looked at for the final grade. Nothing will count towards quarter four. It won't negatively negatively impact students. It can only positively impact student and it will be based on effort, engagement and participation.
Could I ask a question, John?
Yep.
So my only concern is for the kids who have not been able to participate. For whatever reason, it might be that there's somebody in their family is sick or.
Yep, that's what I was just gonna end with actually, uh Gene. So this has to be considered on a s- uh case-by-case, student-by-student basis. We don't know what um is going on at home for certain students. There may be some food insecurity going at ho- going on at home. They may be sick, they may have a family member sick. So while we do um use these guidelines to uh grade students for the end of the year. We will also take into effect what's happening at home for students.
Okay.
Okay.
I wouldn't want a kid to miss out on being able to have a positive increase. Because they just didn't have that opportunity.
No, absolutely. Yep. Oh, so we know that as teachers and during this situation, we have to be. Aware of what's happening at home for our students and use that when finally calculating grades for the end of the year.
Um I have a question.
Yep.
Um and my question is, are we going to be, um this is, this is a a nice, easy-to-understand PowerPoint. Are we going to be um getting this out to the public um through the social media, different options? So that there won't be any question as to, oh, well, here's, here's how these grades are arrived at. And you know, here's why you need to really be as technically, you know, involved as you can, can so you can improve your grades.
Yeah, so what we um will post this on our social media pages. In addition, um teachers will be emailing the information out to uh families to let them know. Um and we'll make sure we are communicating this to all our stakeholders in the in the community.
Great, thank you.
Yep. So the last slide that I have this evening uh talks a little bit about remote learning um beginning now. Uh this week and ending in June's, uh on June seventeenth, the last day of. beginning now, this week and ending in June, on June seventeenth, the last day of school. So as Bob stated, late Friday night, we received the new remote learning plans for the state. And overall, the, the plans do remain consistent. But what they did was they really improved some of the elements and specifically element number two on this slide about prerequisite content standards. So again, I'll just go over each one of them, one through four. So the elements for remote learning that the DSE has outlined is number one, prioritize meaningful connections with educators and peers. So we need to make sure that we are connecting to students, we are connecting to families either virtually or by phone, making sure that's happening, making sure that students are collaborating with one another on Google Hangouts or Google Meets, making sure that's happening. Number two, this is the change or the update that the state did provide. They said, provide engaged instruction focused on the prerequisite content standards that are most critical for student success in the next grade level. So the second part of this sentence, the prerequisite content standards. So what the state did on Friday was they released standards for read, for English, Language Arts, Math, Science and Social Studies for each grade K to twelve, based on the mass DES standards. And they, for each grade level, they highlighted the most critical, important students, standards for students to know to move on to the next grade level or to know for that grade level. So right now, what we're doing is we are looking at those content standards and kind of reshaping how we deliver instruction based on those content standards. And we'll be providing from now until the end of the year, June seventeenth, enrichment or actually remote learning opportunities that are geared towards those state standards that were outlined. So this week, we are meeting with principals, our instructional coaches, in addition to teachers, to review the state's updated plan and to really review the standards to make sure all our teachers and coaches and principals understand the standards that are set forth from now until the end of the year for students. Number three, offer opportunities for enrichment, exercise and play. So we are doing that already. So we don't want this remote learning experience just to be Chromebook or tablet or Google Classroom. We want to make sure we're providing other experiences for students to maybe go outside and do some exercise or calisthetics. In addition, maybe to do some baking or some other scavenger hunt activities or something unique other than just online learning. So we have those opportunities embedded in our Google Classrooms for students. So we have that element already implemented in the district. And then finally, number four, ensure programming is accessible and secure and communication is streamlined for students and their families. So making sure that any platforms that we use, we're making sure that students' privacy rights are in mind. In addition to making sure that we're communicating with students and families effectively, whether in English or Spanish or any other language that they speak. And now I'd like to hand it over to Adam Renda.
Before Adam begins, I just want to talk about the second bullet point there. In terms of the, these power standards, what Desi is asking us to teach, really the prerequisite, so students will have, be more successful in the next grade. Last Tuesday, when Commissioner Riley spoke to all the superintendents prior to the governor's announcement, he did indicate that although this year, this year's MCATs was waived, they received waivers from the federal government, they plan to return to the standard accountability schedule for grades next year. So, you know, the more we can do now to have our students be ready for next year, the better off we'll be next year.
Hey, good evening. So Mr. Thompson commented on many of the points that, that I'll be discussing with you tonight. But we've been doing this for about a month. Our teachers and students and administration have done an amazing job to get this up and running, but it's time to start improving what we're doing. And after the guidance from the state, we can really start to refine how we're engaging our students. In order to do that and to, and to meet all of their needs, we need data to figure out what is working and what is not. So we will be collecting information to understand each student's level of engagement in remote learning. Teachers are using Google Classroom to do that. They're usually using individual, individual meetings and phone calls with students and families about why people are engaged and they're not. While I'm sitting here during school committee, I have a teacher in one of the elementary schools texting me because she's frustrated, talking about how she had a great conversation with the family this morning about the level of engagement of their child and they just, they made a lot of promises about what was going to happen today. And, you know, none of that work got done, right? But that's still some really good information that she was able to pass along to me. I can have this conversation, I can have a conversation with this family to see how we can remove some of those barriers. But we're doing things like engaging in focus groups with teachers. We're meeting with the district improvement team, which includes all of the principals, you know, at least twice a week. I know John's meeting with coaches and other, and other people at the, the school level. We're really getting a good idea of what is working and what is not. So Google Meets is a really good platform for engaging students. So it gives a face-to-face virtual meeting, very similar to what we're using tonight in Zoom. We know that the online interventions have a higher percentage of use, so those are things like Zern, Khan Academy, the iReady platform that we're using now. So those are really working. And then we also need to get information from our teachers and our stu-, excuse me, our parents and our students. And the main way we're going to do that is, is through survey. So we will survey parents and, and students and, and teachers a little bit down the road. And we're going to ask some questions on communications, on what supports they need and what supports are working. What resources do they have? What resources can we help provide? And really, I, I think one of the things that we really need to start asking about is self-care. And this is both for parents, students and, and teachers when we get to that, that, that survey. You know, what are people doing to take care of themselves? This is a very stressful time. It can be really difficult to engage and participate in schoolwork if you're really worried about what's going on with this pandemic. So those, those surveys are created. They should be going out this week. And hopefully it will provide the data we need to refine our remote learning. And I think...
Thank you, Adam. So I, I just want to provide a brief update to the school committee and the community in general in regards to our graduation plans. Right now, we have not finalized any plans. I happened to sit in on a conference call or Zoom, Google Hangout today that Principal Roach led with students from Pittsburgh High School. And they're looking at a few different options right now. And the conclusion, that's the conclusion of that meeting, it was agreed that a decision would be made. Well, here, here it says on the slide, by May fourth. It may be made actually the day after May fourth in terms of, you know, do we try to have some type of onsite graduation or graduation utilizing Crocker Field, you know, observing whatever social distancing requirements remain in effect at the time of graduation. You know, there was discussion about a virtual option. I guess I can tell you that, you know, there was a reluctance to pursue that. But the, the students and the leadership at the high school are being very thoughtful in terms of making sure that our graduates have a, a special graduation and one that everyone will remember.
I have a few questions, if the time is right.
Sure.
Can you hear me? As, as we're going along, the thought occurred to me, everybody's in a certain grade class. Is there any interaction or have they lost their classmates to this individual home learning and communication with their teacher? Is there any inter, interclassmate considerations? That's one thought. And then another thought that I had is, are you getting any new enrollments in the school system during this time? And then the third thought that I had was, what do you foresee in the future? So much is going into this startup of this method of, of present, being educated. If the coronavirus goes away, do we go back as is or do you foresee some kind of integration of the two? I can repeat any of those questions.
I think, Rosemary, can you clarify the, the, your first question?
Well, I was just thinking, are the students lonely? I mean, you go to a school and you have a best friend and you have a group and you interact and now they're, they're being separated and a lot of stress, I mean, you know, development to continue learning these, with communication with the teacher. But what about with their classmates? That was the first one.
So yeah, I, I think, well, you know, school is a, is a social experience for our students. And, you know, I can say, you know, at the later grades, even more social than at the earlier grades. And I think our participation and engagement has been reflective of, you know, partly that social or lack of social contact. So we have seen some, some impact. You know, moving to your second question about enrollment, we are continuing to enroll students in the district and at Pittsburgh High School. You know, it's, it's a little bit more cumbersome now, but we are adding students. And lastly, your question with regards to the future. No one knows the future, what it'll entail, what will happen either over the next six weeks or two months as the governor considers lifting, you know, certain restrictions. Whatever the decision is, we'll, we'll follow the recommendations of the health expert in the state. Massachusetts happens to be a state with one of the highest, you know, incidence of the virus. And, you know, I don't know if we've actually passed a peak here in Massachusetts, but it remains a concern. I can tell the school committee and community in general that Desi, you know, the state are investigating, you know, options for the fall. You know, one of those options is a continued form of remote learning, whether that happens full-time or whether there's a hybrid approach to have half the students attend school and one week and the other half conduct remote learning. But any return will really be dictated by the incidence of the virus and and the health and safety of our staff, students and families.
Yeah, I know we don't know, but, you know, with three thousand Chromebooks went out, so presumably to students that did not have them before, so they'll have that equipment. There's just must be a lot of developmental energy being spent on seeing, you know, how to steer this boat into the future. That's all about those issues.
We're, we're, you know, trying to build on every day in terms of what we know about remote learning and, and what our students' needs are and be better tomorrow. And we have seven and a half more weeks of school this, this school year. The summer programming right now is unknown. We will be doing something at a minimum online with our Journeys program. I'd love to say we, you know, we, we would hope to have summer programming in our schools, but unless the social distancing, you know, requirements are released or reduced, that won't be happening.
If I could add, we do have our, our mental health staff, our school guidance counselors, our school adjustment counselors, our clinical interventionists and nurses contacting students who we think may be at risk at, you know, feeling down or depressed about what's going on and offering all types of supports. We're also coordinated with outside agencies to offer different supports to families and students. And we are going to be implementing a tiered system of social emotional support to start the school year next year. And part of, part of that reasoning is to provide what we know is going to be needed support for students coming back after what is probably going to be a fairly traumatic event for them.
Yeah, I, I think it's incalculable what the effects are on us. I mean, I'm very happy personally here at home with lots to do. But I know that if I hear a neighbor start up a car or open a door, I run out to say hi. So without even knowing that I'm missing everybody, I'm missing talking to everybody, you know?
Yeah, it is, it is something, the, the social emotional well-being of our kids is something we talk about daily. It's probably kind of, it's, it's really the biggest barrier that we face to educating our kids. And it's something we're really trying to stay on top of and do everything we can and right now, which it's, it's challenging, but...
Good job, everybody, really. I mean, it's, it's amazing to, to watch this unfold and be part of it. Good job.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the teachers in the district and the, in the advisors. I, I mean, I, on the days where my kids have Google Meets, you can tell the difference because they are getting a chance to talk with classmates. They are getting a chance to feel some normalcy and laugh a little and engage. You know, I know there are a lot of districts that have basically said they don't want to run, you know, that they don't want to go the video meet group. And I think that that's really unfortunate because kids really need this. And, you know, Rosemary, I can tell you for sure, it has a drastic effect on the kids. They are social beings and it's not the same, you know, just looking at a screen, but thank God they can at least look at a screen. So I just want to say thank you to the Pittsburgh Public School teachers and staff and advisors and administrators, because I really think they've done a tremendous job and I'm really grateful for it.
Thank you.
I agree. Very proud of what's happening in our school system. Thanks to all involved.
I think we have one more slide and I think Craig will, you'll bring us on on that one.
Yep, thanks, Bob. Just a quick update for the, the pandemic EBT program. And it's part of the federal relief monies and partnership between the Department of Transitional Assistance and the Department of Education. And it provides families with resources who are eligible for free or reduced lunch. I believe it's five dollars and seventy cents per day per student. The nice thing for us in the city of Pittsburgh, where we are a community-eligible program, all of our families qualify for support under this program. So I know that Ms. Spiny and Dave Smens has been working to get all the information uploaded to the Department of Education with our updated enrollment lists. And families should be receiving letters. They just said at the beginning of May, so they should be coming out soon. And this will be provided for families who currently have EBT cards. This is a, an amount that will be added to their current accounts. And then for families who don't, they will be receiving an EBT card that would provide them the opportunity to purchase food in any store that currently accepts SNAP benefits. So it's a great resource for families. I know that here on the bottom of the slide, there is a, a link to the Project Bread for some additional information. There's also additional information, some frequently asked questions on the, on the MassGov website. If you just Google pandemic EBT from Massachusetts, it has a list of resources there. But again, just to remind families that this is not for just folks who currently have EBT cards. This is available to one hundred percent of our families in the city of Pittsburgh. So it's a great resource for folks to look into. Again, if, should be receiving hopefully a letter soon. And if not, check in with us and/or you could go to the link for Project Bread. There's a hotline, there's numbers to call for additional information as well.
Thank you, Craig. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Can't hear.
Okay, I'm on now. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Craig, that EBT card, is that above and beyond what you may already have an EBT card? This one is a pandemic EBT card? Yes, correct. It will be added that the amount. Yeah. It'll be added for each child of the family at twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents a week. So if they currently have a card, it'll be added to it. If they don't have a card, they will be receiving a new card. Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Well, I don't believe we're discussing budget items or policy items.
Not this evening.
Right, and.
Unless Craig wants to add anything from, you know, the the meetings this earlier in the week.
Yeah, there's really been no new news, hoping to get maybe some more clarification that we can present to the community on for next week's meeting. Okay. All right, thank you. And we already voted on the recommendation for AppleWow, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Executive session, no, no need for executive session. I hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.